We call it over, the December twenty-third, Commissioner's Court meeting, it's nine AM, it's the regular meeting. Before we get started, we start with our opening prayer and pledge.
Right, please stand. Lord, we pray that you guide us as always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Please guide us through the transitions our country is going through, as we know you have a plan for us all. Lord, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive, let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder for everyone to turn off their cell phones so they don't interrupt the proceedings. And next would be public input. I don't believe we have any requests for public input. And if anybody does want to comment on something on the agenda, we'd ask you to wait for that time. But I do not see any public comments, so we'll go to Commissioners' comments. Mr. Overby?
I have a tiny little speech, if you will. I have it written on my phone, so I won't go too long. Today, I sit here with a grateful heart for my very last meeting. It has been an honor to represent and serve Kear County, working alongside dedicated individuals, who many of them are here, who share a passion for making our community stronger, safer, and more vibrant. I try to serve honorably and to the best of my ability, and I thank Judge Kelly for that opportunity. Though I may no longer serve in this capacity, my dedication to this community remains steadfast. I look forward to finding ways to contribute as a fellow resident. My deepest gratitude goes to the employees, who are awesome. Your expertise, your collaboration, and your unwavering commitment have been invaluable, and your smiles and your warm wishes on day one will not be forgotten. Shout out to Road and Bridge and the county engineers. I appreciate your experience and the time you spent with me on various projects. You probably had to babysit me the most. And to Jody, I haven't seen, is Jody here today?
No, he's not here.
Oh, my gosh, who trained me up the most and the fastest, and will probably have to still give me advice in my future. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
No rain. What can I say?
Well, speaking of rain, you're right, not much, but the burn ban does remain lifted, certainly in precinct two. Been spending an awful lot of time on the formation of a three ninety-one commission, but that's on the agenda, so we'll talk a lot more about that later. And there has been a lot of public input coming to the court through email at least, about the hotel occupancy tax. And so, just a few words about it, you know, that's been talked about for quite a while. It was certainly talked about during the budget workshops back in, I think, July, as a possibility. I certainly talked about it in a couple of the town halls that I did in October. And then it was approved from the county's perspective right before Thanksgiving. The idea there was to do what so many counties, certainly all of the neighboring counties have done, is put a hotel occupancy tax of seven percent in effect that would go towards helping encourage tourism and visitors to Kear County. Certainly not to discourage, that was not the intent. I realize people have concerns about that. But, you know, the funds will primarily, at least initially, be used to, for the improvements that need to be made to the indoor arena at the youth event center. And, you know, certainly, my thinking, I think probably some of the other commissioners, looked at that as an opportunity to not have to raise property taxes on Kear County, at least property owners. Because that's a two and a half million dollar project. So, at any rate, there was a lot of misinformation, and initially, I think, one of the papers reported that it was a twenty percent tax. It's not, it's a seven percent incremental tax. The state has a six percent tax that's already in place and would be applicable. So, it's just some facts, and we did issue a press release to help clarify some of those facts. And I think at least one paper ran it last week, and hopefully others will as well. Otherwise, just Merry Christmas to everybody. It's been an interesting year. I look forward to the next year, particularly with the new court, and a very happy New Year to all. I thank everybody who's played a key role, both in the county and also amongst our constituents. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Harris?
Well, I don't have as much to say. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and safe travels to you or any family you have coming to see you. And as we bid farewell to Commissioner Overby and Commissioner Letts, I want them to have a especially good Christmas, and thank you for your service, and especially you, you know, speaking here, all the years that you put in. So, that's all I got to say.
Couple comments, I want to add one thing to what you're saying about the hotel taxes, that one of the things that I've heard is that it's additional work, you know, reporting. And it's no additional work. You are already filling out the same forms you put in. If the tax goes in place, you just, you know, your sales tax report that you have to do anyway, you just, you know, put it in Kear County, it's automatically calculated into it, so it's no additional piling or work. Other than that, you know, I'm not going to say much about my, it's been my last meeting. I think I've had more retirement functions, it seems, than I can imagine, thanks to the Sheriff Department and a lot of the county employees, and then again, the bench at the Christmas luncheon the other day. So, I've enjoyed it. And I'm not going anywhere, I'll be around. We'll be around, and before we, later in the meeting, I'm going to go over a few things that are left out there that if the court, next court wants me to, I'll be glad to continue with at no cost, for the tax payers. Not a whole lot, hopefully it could get wrapped up within a month or so, but there are a few things that I'd say if the court wants me to. So, with that, let's go ahead and get started. Item one, consider discuss take appropriate action to approve, authorize the county judge to execute real estate transfer agreement by and between Kear County and Ingram Independent School District, transferring a one point two-four acre tract of real property without improvements in Kear County located at six hundred Highway thirty-nine, Ingram, Texas, to Ingram Independent School District. Mr. Harris?
Well, I'm gonna start off right off by saying I move for approval, and then we'll discuss it.
I second.
All right, go ahead.
This has been a long time coming. When Dr. Templin and I first started talking about this, I immediately, I believe I conferred with Bob Reeves. I wanted to make sure it'd be something that would be good for him. If any of y'all remember our old West Kerr annex, it was, this is quite an improvement, even though it's a very old building. I also brought Commissioner Letts out there to kind of do a walking tour, as well as the sheriff, and kind of how we would proceed if we got that building. And it started out as a lease, you know, and we liked that, and then, of course, we, in the back of our minds, thought this might be something we could do down the road. So, you know, everything's been positive. So, we're looking at trading this one point two-four acres right next to Ingram ISD Tom Moore High School in front of Presbyterian Church on Highway thirty-nine. So, and then we'll talk about the other property in the next one. Aye.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Any opposed? I think it's unanimous. All right, got that done. One thing, we can go back on your motion, because the judge is not here. You specifically authorized myself as acting county judge to sign the documents today.
It was so amended.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Out of one point two, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve and authorize county judge to execute the real estate transfer agreement by and between Kear County and Ingram Independent School District, accepting transfer of nine point five acre tract of real property with improvements in Kear County, Texas, located at five ten College Street, Ingram, Texas, from Ingram Independent School District.
Okay, and this is the other part of the trade, and this is what will be our continued West Kerr.
You're gonna make the motion, Chris?
Yes, well, I will. I move for approval.
I second.
Does that include Commissioner Letts's signature?
With, yes. Okay, so this is the other half of the trade, and this is what we get out of the deal. And as I kind of already said, this is a step up for us all the way around. Lots of parking, lots of office space. There are some things in there that, you know, when Ingram ISD came to us with the lease, I think it was a dollar a year. So, they gave us a pretty cushy deal, okay? Now, there's going to be a transition. We're going to give them kind of a cushy deal on a couple offices that they need to maintain. One of them is their IT department needs to, it's going to be a while before they can completely move out, so we said, no problem. Also, they're still doing some construction, and so their contractor has one of those offices as well. So, you know, we're going to let them, we're not kicking them out as soon as the deals, things dry. We're going to let them continue for, I believe it's up to three years or something like that. And there's a gym there, and that's got a long-term lease with a little sports group, basketball league for the area, Ingram area, and then they're going to continue. We don't have a whole lot of use for a gym anyway, so we're going to let them continue there. So, that's all I got.
I'm all for it. I think it's a great deal, so the public can be reminded, perhaps. You know, there was a portion of Proposition A back in two thousand twenty-two. That bond failed, but, you know, it had been proposed that we would spend four point one million dollars on a new West Kerr annex. And to me, this is far more economic, obviously. You didn't mention there is a seventy-five thousand dollar
No, I didn't.
fee that would go into this deal, if you will, between the two property trades. So, it's recognizing that this facility, the nine point five acres, is worth a little bit more than our one point, whatever it is, two acres next to the high school. So, it's in recognition of that. But again, I think it's a vast improvement over the previous West Kerr annex, and I think it'll serve us for a long time. While it's an old facility, we're likely to have some maintenance issues, particularly with ACs. It's okay, it's still a good deal. And I'm very happy to see it happen.
I was agreeing, it's a very good deal. It also allows property, you know, for looked at in the future, but for Road and Bridge to use part of that property for a yard out in that part of the county, which is also, they have one in the area, Mountain Home, but this would be a good improvement as well. But like Mr. Pace said, there will be budgetary impact from this building moving forward. It is a very old building, but a good, a really good deal for the county.
And it's a good deal for the school. You know, they didn't need the property anymore, and more that other property right next to the high school is good for them. So, it works out for both.
And right now, we don't have a need for the additional office space that they're going to continue to occupy for the next couple of years. Down the road, we'll look at it. There is one office space that's currently available. And I see we have an interested party here that as soon as Ingram signs off on it, we'll put an item on the agenda to move the historic commission out there, because it's a very good deal for them, and will be a much better facility, so.
Any further discussion on the side? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Great. Out of one point three, consider discuss take appropriate action to approve and authorize county judge to execute contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc., Heather Stevens, Ms. Wilkie, these are her folks.
We have a contract here with Axon requesting that you authorize county judges or Commissioner Letts's signature today for this contract. This is part of the case management system that we've been working on for many months that will solve lots of our, lots of our needs, and along with the shift to Odyssey Navigator, most of our needs will be met. Do you have any questions?
Wilkie, any?
Yeah, I'd just like to just do a little refresher. As you all remember, we had three main issues. We had several issues, but the three main issues were the downloading, sorry.
The downloading aspect of downloading cases from law enforcement into our office that takes hours. Sometimes it freezes up, we have to start all over. Sometimes we leave cases downloading overnight. We come back, and either they're downloaded, or they've frozen up, and we have to start all over. This will take care of that. There will be no more downloading. Previously, law enforcement had been doing their downloading. Then it was transferred to us, and now we're doing the downloading, and it's incredibly time-consuming. This will solve it. Another issue we were having that came up quite often was this server space. Originally, the prosecutors paid to have servers when we went semi-paperless years ago, way before everybody went paperless. I believe it was probably on two thousand and thirteen or fourteen. And we had these servers where all this digital media and documents were dumped. Well, things have changed a lot since then, and now we have lots and lots of digital media, and we keep running out of server space, even though we dispose of, we take everything off that we no longer need. Every Thursday after court, we go in and we remove things we no longer need, especially digital media, which is what's taking up most of the space. Every officer has to have a camera. They have to have a body worn camera, patrol car camera, and these cameras, the patrol car cameras have many different views and angles. And so, there's just a lot of digital media. So, that was the other issue, running out of server space, the county having to buy more server space. That will take care of that. Another really big issue was having IT involved with discovery. Anytime a defense attorney had problems accessing their discovery, they had to go through us first. And what we tell them is, we try to work it out for them first, then once we see that we're not going to be able to, that IT's going to have to get involved, then we say, okay, try to get in three times, and then on the third time, take a screenshot. And then we take that screenshot and we send it to IT, who then figures out what the problem is, and they fix it. And it's because access to that portal where all the discovery is, is IT, IPN? IPN address based. It's based on your IP address. It's not based on a password, you know, much like getting into your bank account and accessing your bank account or your credit cards or your mortgage or your car insurance. This was IP-based. We, in the attorney, District Attorney's Office and County Attorney's Office, don't have access to fix that, only IT does. So, those were the three biggest concerns. Another big concern was the documentation of discovery. We weren't doing it correctly. We were trying to, but we just didn't have the manpower, the ability to do it. This will also now document that discovery the way it's mandated to be done. So, we are asking that you approve this. Nobody will have to do any more downloading. It's a drag and drop system, so that will take care of that. And I don't have a person that's assigned to do this. I've had to take my investigator and have him do that. My office is incredibly trial-intensive. We have fifteen to twenty trials a year, and that's a lot of trials. And my investigator is supposed to be helping me and other prosecutors get ready for trial, and he can't do that because he's spending all his time downloading. Another thing that I want you to be aware of is that I've always had a policy in my office that cases and defendants who pose the greatest danger to the community must go to the very next available grand jury. Well, we are starting to lag behind on that, and we're only catching them when we find out that they bonded out and they've committed a new offense, because we just can't keep up with that, and that's really important. For example, sex offenders, drunk drivers, violent offenders such as aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, assault family violence. You read about the defendants who lead law enforcement through multi-county, high-speed car chases. Those are the people that we want indicted, presented to a grand jury right away, and hopefully indicted. And it's really important that we be able to do that for the safety of the community. We really appreciate law enforcement and everything they do. You see stories daily about all the people they're taking off the street to keep our community safe. Well, if we're not able to operate efficiently, then it's just a cat and mouse game. It's just a catch and release game, because what they do has to have follow-through with our office and prosecution, or they're just right back out on the street. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I would like to add that I commend all of y'all for working together with all of the different departments and figuring out how you're doing it, how they're
So, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I, I would like to add that I commend all of y'all for working together with all of the different departments and figuring out how you're doing it, how they're doing it. You worked with the city of Kerrville, because there's, and y'all didn't talk about that, because there's a huge overlap with them as well, and I think you've found the best solution, and, and you didn't do it quickly, you didn't pick the first one where we thought that was the greatest one, but you've come to this conclusion. So with that, I will make a motion to, uh, approve and authorize the county judge and the pretend county judge today to execute a contract with Axon Enterprises.
Second.
Okay, I do have a few questions. Uh, so Lucy, Kerrville Police Chief, they're, they're good with this and happy to do it?
I'll defer to Heather on that, she's had a lot more communication with him, so I'll just defer to Heather.
I have not talked to the police chief since, um, we had several meetings in this room, talking about a case management system, and so I haven't talked to him. The sheriff met with him last week, as well as, uh, Mr. Moose, my assistant county attorney, and, um, the sheriff said that after the meeting, he and police chief talked, and they understand that we have a need. Um, that's about as much as I can tell you about that.
So without putting too many words in the sheriff's mouth, who, who's standing right there, or sitting right there, sorry, you, you're okay with, with this system and won't have any detrimental impact on your operations?
Correct, correct, I, I think what has to happen is API dri- API address has to be built, uh, we are talking tomorrow at this time for that. Uh, my understanding is we, we operate as normal when we get that, and then when we do get that, I think the drop and drop is in play at that time. Uh, I don't want to speak on behalf of the chief, I mean, we have two completely different systems, uh, I think as we get on, you know, it'll be, it'll, it'll work great for us. Uh, in talking to the chief, we both understand, you know, there's multiple other agencies in us that, that, that they definitely need something. Uh, this is a very good product, the chief says, uh, so I, I think in time, we'll be able to work everything out.
Okay, thank you. Now, next questions are all about cost. How are these costs gonna be shared between, uh, County Attorney's Office and the two district, district, uh, Attorney's Offices?
So in the backup, you've got the statement of work from Axon, and it's split up between each of our offices. Um, right now, you've got, uh, what was budgeted for an item that we were considering, um, early on in this process, and so those amounts were budgeted for each of our three offices, and so it's split between our offices in that way. Um, so that at the front end, this year, oh, sorry, I can't see it as well as I would like to. It will cost seventy thousand dollars, just over seventy thousand dollars, to get us up and moving for this product, and then in future years, it'll be about twenty-four thousand dollars, and those will s- be split about equally between the offices. At this front end, um, Lucy's office and my office are taking on a little bit more of the cost, so, uh, Mr. Harpold's office will catch up on that end throughout, so that twenty-four thousand dollars will be split about equally between our offices.
Okay, and, and is this within the budget for this year?
Yes, sir. What was budgeted, uh, during this summer's budget process, uh, this will cover that, as well as, um, about twelve thousand dollar cost to, um, integrate the sheriff's system so that he can use this too.
Okay.
I like it as a cost savings compared to what y'all originally looked at.
Yes.
And, uh, it looks like it works with everybody better. Also, the labor savings.
Yeah.
Taking the load off IT, you know, that, that's a big cost savings as well, so I appreciate y'all's diligence.
Thank you.
And, and on that note, my office is already using Odyssey and Navigator for attorney manager, so once, um, the county switches over to Navigator, it'll pretty much be overnight for us, and we plan to continue to use that. And then also, the Gillespie County Attorney is already using Axon, they just started, they, they still haven't even done their training, but they've started implementing it, and so, you know, all, all the, the area will have the same thing.
Good. Okay. And I presume since this comes from the County Attorney's Office, that you've approved the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, out of one point four, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding salary for full-time Justice of Precinct One and Precinct Three Clerk, Judge Mitchell and Judge French.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, I have a slight limp, um, and I wanna, we wanna thank y'all for approving this full-time position that you did in this last budget, because we really needed it. But there is an explanation why it's taken us so long to get this in front of you. Um, I fractured my tibia, a broken knee on my left, and had to have surgery. So we just recently, um, had to start, we got it posted and started, um, um, interviewing applicants. Um, so, we believe, uh, we know, we know we believe, we found our perfect applicant. Um, they are, the applicant is a county employee, and, um, they've been here for years.
So, uh,
Go ahead.
So, yeah, so the applicant, um, we understand our, this position was approved at a grade fifteen. Um, the applicant will be taking a bit of a pay cut, but at the same time, the applicant has, uh, a, is further down than the fifteen-four that it was approved at, um, I believe it's a fifteen-nine. And so, uh, because we're three months into this budget si- season, we do have the money in our budget to cover that, um, difference, um, but we're just here to get the blessing of the court, and to be forward and offer the position.
She will be, I mean, he, or the, the applicant. Oops. Uh, will be taking, uh, over a five thousand dollar cut in pay to come to our offices.
Didn't y'all originally have a, a part-time person that was gonna bump up to full-time? Did, did that fall through?
We did, the position was open.
It was open.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, to me, this seems something we've talked about for a long time, they've needed for a long time. Um, it's within our, I mean, the person's taking the pay cut, and it's pretty, I think we have done this in the past, um, um,
You would know.
Longevity, yeah. Digital longevity in place, um, that, you know, to me, I'd be in favor of this.
And I believe that was in the, um, county handbook
Right.
That they keep there.
Yeah, it can be done, it just, that needs to come to the court for approval.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yes, we need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay.
Second.
To be fair, the county is not the one that's losing money on the steal. It's the applicant.
We have a motion from Commissioner, Mr. Overbee, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank y'all.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Out of one point five, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve and authorize County Judge to sign amended contract and statement of work with Tyler Technologies. The updated contract changes the provided services from Tyler Technologies from the current twenty-fourteen on-premises services to the twenty-twenty-three software-as-a-service, uh, platform of enterprise justice.
Please tell us what you just read.
Hopefully you can explain that.
Good morning, Court. Uh, so the current Odyssey system that the Courts and Justice uses is based off of a twenty-fourteen build, uh, it's an on-premise service, uh, that the law enforcement departments use, the Courts and Justice use. We've been in the process of trying to upgrade to their new version of Navigator, uh, for various reasons, there's been some massive struggles with making that go live, and we do need to transition to Navigator, actually, it's, they call it Enterprise Justice, uh, that helps us get into compliance with our C just audits that is quickly coming. Uh, this is something that was supposed to have been done three years ago. Uh, so this is a huge step into the future. It also integrates with the Axon software that you guys had just approved, so, uh, it's kind of a, a win-win for, uh, the county employees, uh, my department, you know, as far as taking manpower off of, of my department as well. So, um, the way the cost structure is broken out for this year, uh, it does not change my budget at all for this year, uh, just kind of based on how the numbers and credits that, that Tyler Tech is providing for us. So this year, it's a wash financially, however, in the years following, it is a very significant jump to, um, from a hundred thousand this year to three hundred and, three hundred and sixty thousand a year. So it, it is a large, it is a large jump. However, I have already begun to massage my budget for next year to see exactly how this fits, and, uh, as of this morning, I'm only seeing about a sixty thousand dollar a year increase, starting in fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, but I have not yet fully scrubbed my budget for next year yet, uh, and I'm still kind of waiting for the, the summer budget workshop process to begin, so.
So this is just an amended contract, and it's something we have to do?
It's a huge step to the future, uh, you know, as you can see, the platform was in place ten years ago, and we've got bugs upon bugs upon bugs
Yeah.
That we needed to move away from anyway. This just moves us from the on-premise solution into the, the, the cloud version of it, so, and it's the integration with Axon, uh, RMS, CAD, it's pretty much seamless. And we, by getting it approved in this cycle, this week, we can actually start our, the SaaS migration beginning, uh, January sixth.
So will, will this help us in terms of, you know, not having to continuously upgrade our server storage capacity and all?
So all of that manpower bill goes back to Tyler Tech, so any patching, any version upgrades, all that stuff is done through Tyler Tech.
Okay, done through them, but, yeah, is that included in the cost that we're
Yes.
About to approve?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize, um, to sign the amended contract and statement of work with Tyler Technologies.
Second. I was a little bit slow. Um, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended contract, uh, statement of work with Tyler Technologies, updated, uh, the updated con- well, that's all we need, it's good enough.
Amendment contract.
It's one of those things, it's just unfortunate with softwares, we all know with our personal stuff, costs go up, and, uh, if you don't
You gotta stay compliant.
Upgrade your software, you're gonna be in, you're gonna be spending more and more money trying to fix things, so it's necessary. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Out of one point six, discussion and potential action shall occur regarding the following matters pursuant to Chapter three ninety-one of the Texas Local Government Code, and under authority, A, approval of Kerr County, Texas, external draft slash inter-local governmental cooperative agreement, included, um, including its attached Exhibit one slash Commission Territory Map and Exhibit two, Commission Bylaw, collectively Kerr County Draft One documents, for external review and discussion regarding the proposed creation and implementation of a regional planning commission with Kendall County, Texas; B, approval of submission of said Kerr County Draft One documents to the Commissioners' Court of Kendall County, Texas, for review and discussion regarding the proposed regional planning commission; and C, all related matters.
Can you repeat that? Our, our, yes, thank you. Uh, before I make a motion, I'll just give the public just a little bit of background on this, you know, we, we, various people have been working on the formation of a three ninety-one sub-regional planning commission for quite some time now, and, and we're well aware that our constituents, uh, not only want this, perhaps demand that we take action, so, we, we've made a lot of good progress. We had a very, uh, a good meeting, uh, last Monday in executive, well, this past mon- no, yeah, last Monday, sorry. Last Monday in an executive session with outside counsel and our county attorney, a- and we made significant progress going through what is a new interlocal agreement that was prepared by outside counsel, and of course, uh, in further, uh, editing the draft bylaws. And, uh, so everyone is aware, these will still be draft documents, because what we're gonna be approving today, when I make this motion, is the release of this draft document package. Um, and, and then, basically, the ball will be in Kendall County's court. Uh, I'm told that there is keen interest, at least from three members of the new court, after the first of January, to go ahead and, and complete this and, and form the three ninety-one commission, so, as I say, uh, once we release it, the ball is in their court. Um, I, I, I will say, we, we got the documents on Friday, and of course, I've found a number of little typos and things that should be corrected, whether we do that now and, and agree to release an amended version, or just release this, as is knowing that they're gonna have to be.
I would go that route.
Edited, uh, but I, there's a bunch of them, so, I don't know if it's worth spending time on it now.
I wouldn't, I mean, you know, it, it is gonna be, it's like a tennis match, it's gonna go back and forth, but I will say that, uh, this has been a slow incoming, and, uh, we as a court have done most of the heavy lifting on this, so it's gonna be a lot easier for Kendall to move forward on it, uh, probably at a much quicker pace.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, yeah, there are little typos in it and what have you, well, they're, they're probably gonna, uh, question some things or wanna tweak a few things that we've already put in there, and, and so it'll go back and forth, but I think it ought to move fairly quickly after the first year.
Yeah, I, that, that is certainly the hope, and, uh, I guess in terms of the corrections that I've seen, I can document those and
Right.
And just put them out there, kind of along with this draft version, maybe when it gets officially sent to, uh, Kendall County. So with that, I will make a motion, and my motion is that, uh, the Commissioners' Court approve the Kerr County Draft One document packet for external review and discussion regarding the proposed creation and implementation of a regional planning commission with Kendall County, Texas, and that we approve the submission of the Kerr County Draft One document package to the Commissioners of, Commissioners' Court of Kendall County, Texas, for review and discussion regarding the pro- proposed regional planning commission.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion for Mr. Pace, a second for Mr. Harris. Um, any further discussion? Out of one, Commissioner, given to the, the typos, are any of them substantive in your mind? I mean, that we, if there's any substantive, we probably should make that note, if they're typos
Yeah, I mean
That doesn't make that much difference at this point.
Minor things, like in the definition of a BESS, a battery energy storage system, he has facility included, I would delete that, because every time he refers to BESS subsequently, he adds in the word facility, so it's kind of double-dipping. I think there, there was some concern in my mind that, that we've selected offices based only in Kerrville and Burnie, and it's something for consideration that I don't think we need to put in here, but for the next version, do we wanna include Comfort? Because that's been a good place for us to meet, kind of halfway in between. Um, and then, let's see.
It can be decided later.
There, there were some other minor things, uh, you know, about whether it's a, a county seeking the removal of an individual, a, a word needed to be inserted there, let's And that's the interlocal agreement, so not, not very much. And the bylaws, he referred to what should be board members as directors, you know, there's no other reference to directors, so we should just call them board members. And, uh, again, comments about Comfort, there was one clause in here where we're talking about board positions shall be a, uh, for, this is for the agriculture or landowner representative position, you know, it's, it's laid out that Kerr County will appoint the original, the first position, and in odd-numbered years, uh, st- well, starting in twenty-five, and, and basically, it doesn't say anything about Kendall County appointing in the even years, so it's, to me, it's a minor oversight, but
Sure.
It, it should probably have language that says
Yeah, that would be
That Kendall County should, you know, will rather, uh, appoint in the even number years.
Okay.
And, and then, basically, we're taking the bylaws, which are now an exhibit to the interlocal government cooperative agreement, and we keep referring to them, well, in the bylaws, it refers to the, uh, county's agreement, which is the interlocal agreement, as an exhibit. So we have what's an exhibit to the county's agreement containing an exhibit, which is the same document. So to me, there might be a better way to refer to the county's agreement
Okay.
Instead of attaching another document. So that's, that's the sub- nothing substantive.
Right.
They're all rather minor.
I, I was just confused, did you, did you say that you had it listed as the, the members would be Kerrville and Burnie?
No.
No, 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 the meeting places would be either Kerrville in, in county facilities in Kerrville or in Burnie.
Put Kerr County and Kendall County?
Well, no, the way it's written, it, it made sense. I mean, you could broadly go with county instead, but
That would cover Comfort, which you were referring to.
Well, there, there's another way to do that, sure.
But there's a, that's again, that's
But, but that's kinda out of, out of context that you're taking it. So, I mean, it's just, we, we can cover that later, uh, whether we would want to enable the meeting, you know, in, in Comfort just because it's convenient halfway in between for, for many of us. That's all.
Commissioner, and I'm just, my memory's faded these days. I know we did some action on this, do we need to undo anything we've done, or is this all new? What did we, I know we approved
We didn't approve anything in the executive session, if you mean. The only thing we've approved up to now is a resolution.
The resolution's it?
And, and I think that stands as is. The next step is to get these agreements, you know, signed off between the two counties. Otherwise, I don't think anything else needs to be done.
And those were his two, those were his two, which he read.
Right.
And that's what we do.
And just, to announce, the reason it's being done this way is that we don't want to have a, us approve it today, then have to amend it and cancel that one, and then go back and forth. We wanna wait until there's a final document that's agreed to by both Kendall and Kerr Counties, and then have a one-time vote.
And, and I hope we're getting very close, but who, who knows what they're gonna ask for?
But this is
They also have an outside counsel.
Right. And, uh, we have, have to make an excuse for the typos, but there is a, uh, our outside counsel was under a little bit of a time crunch to get this done in a very short period of time, and I think he did a pretty good job. And I think it's being done, uh, properly now.
I, I agree, and, and all the things that we discussed and agreed in the executive session, they're, they're covered in here. It's just, there still exist a few things, and, you know, we'll probably be tweaking this again.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion that is read by Commissioner Paces? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank y'all. Out of one point seven, consider to discuss and approve presentation of Hope Country Youth Event Center FY twenty-three, twenty-four annual report presented by the management company, Oakview Group, Jake Williamson.
Good morning, Court. Um, for a restart, I just wanna say thank you for all of your service, Commissioner Litz, it's been a pleasure working with you for a decade here, so. And that's the least I could say, so, um, pleasure. Uh, in your backup, you do have the report, I know the public doesn't see it here. Uh, we will post it on our website, saying that it is a public document, so if anybody has questions, they're always welcome to, uh,
Jake, you didn't happen to bring an extra copy of that, did you? I didn't get a printed copy, and it's kinda illegible, the stuff you get offline that got scanned.
You didn't get one in your thing?
Well, I don't, I don't ever have a printout stuff.
Oh, okay.
Okay, if you've got an actual, thank you.
So, of course, the report's, you know, quite, quite long, we go over the facility overview, kinda the general things that, uh, that don't change every year. We, we do have a facility, and it has multiple venues within it. We do wanna note that, uh, thanks to the San Antonio Kennel Club last year, we did add more power to the show barn to address their needs for, uh, additional power hookups for the dog grooming, so I don't want to make, I wanna make sure that didn't get missed in it. Uh, we did have a, uh, banner year for revenue again. Uh, we continue to, uh, to climb on that front as we continue to, uh, uh, service the clients that come out there. Uh, new groups to note from last year, we did have a Corey Morrow concert. Uh, we welcomed the Border Terrier Club of America. To note a few, uh, we will have even more this year. We do see, uh, a continued, uh, turnover of, uh, new people coming out there, so we're excited for that. It shows that we're not stagnant and just, uh, solely revolving calendar. But, uh, with that, you know, the, the financials will show that we did spend every dollar that the court allowed us to this year. Uh, that was due to rising maintenance costs, um, and not meeting our revenue goals that we'd actually set forth, uh, just due to the economy. People didn't have as many parties this summer, uh, that we had thought we would, that we budgeted for, um, there. But we made up for that with, uh, extra ancillaries, uh, so RV rentals, um, liquor sales, things of that nature. So we did come out with a zero balance, so there'll be nothing carried forward into this year. Again, fif, uh, almost fifty percent of our revenue is from banquets, uh, although they only make up six percent of our events. So that, that just owes a show how much community-driven we are for our event load, that came in at sixty-three percent of the events again, uh, which is phenomenal. Uh, I always wanna thank the court for, uh, making the place available for, uh, everybody, four H, Sheriff's Office, other agencies around town, uh, to host their meetings and events, um, mostly at no cost to them. So, uh, in the next graphs, you'll see that, uh, you know, of the four hundred and sixty-two events we had last year, which is a record for us, a hundred and sixty-eight of those were paid events, uh, that again is a record for us. So, uh, we're excited for that, like I had said before, and our trends continue to mirror, uh, trends in the community where we do have a, uh, more of a call for the community events, but we balance that out with, with other conventions, uh, consumer shows and banquets, uh, to make sure our, the event mix is eclectic for y'all, so that everybody in the county has a chance to use the facility. We did bring in, uh, ten percent more in revenue from last year, so that is a, a good sizable increase again. We're hoping that with the new Pepsi deal and all those things this year, we'll be able to hopefully match another ten percent. Exciting things for me as a person based in tourism, um, we have a new platform to pull data from, uh, placer.ai. So you will see some graphs that depict, um, there, those numbers in the reports. Y'all should be very proud of your event center. We are the second most visited leisure place in the entire county, uh, just behind Luis Hayes Park. So I, I, I don't know what else you would want from your event center. You have, you welcome more people than the baseball fields do every year. So, um, and that's cell phone data, so kids and stuff without phones, of course, doesn't hit those. So I think you're even more so, um, there. We have great demographic information that we're using to drive more sponsorship revenue this year. Based on that, I can tell you that ten percent of the people went to eat before coming to the event center, and fourteen percent of the people went directly to a dining facility after they left our event center. So I am one of those paranoid people about cell phone data, uh, worries me, but I can tell you a lot of information. So it's pretty great for marketing to be able to show y'all exactly what's going on out there, and, uh, who's using the facility. So, um, a lot of information's in that report, um, for y'all to, to have. And like I said, the public will be able to see that, uh, when we post it online. Moving forward, uh, as I just briefly mentioned, we did start a Pepsi partnership in October. Uh, we're hoping, uh, that's, it's in its infancy, but we are getting it off the ground, um, getting those groups affected by that, uh, onboard as we move some product, uh, in exchange for some sponsorship revenue from Pepsi. Uh, the indoor arena, phase one of the renovations will start in March. We're excited for that, and we have a highway marquee project that has been slated in this year's, uh, county budget for capital improvement. So we're working through that process, and we are completely in support of the hot tax initiative naturally to, uh, to help lessen the taxpayer burden, um, of the facility, uh, so that we can get those upgrades and also help uh, lower the operating cost that's on the, uh, county budget. So of course, we're in favor of that, um, you know? The only thing I would add about hot taxes, it's not a tax for locals, it's people that visit that pay that tax. So, um, it's, you know, it's a standard in counties and cities, so.
Jake, I just had one question, and it's terminology, one. When you say your terminology of charity, community, that's pretty much the county's use of the facility? Is almost all of that, or is there other, I mean, what's the other charity? Cause we don't have any one who's completely free anymore, do we?
We have a lot that are completely free.
Oh, we do?
So four H.
We do.
Well, four, I bet four H is county, to me.
So, yeah, so we, we, we classify those in our system as charity, community, I guess that's just our, our line item for that, um.
I think even some political parties, we allow them to use
I could trade, change that terminology in the future.
It does, I mean, it's really not charity, in my mind, it's, it's, it's governmental almost, governmental use or something like that. Most, I don't know if there's other terminology, it's a minor point, but it's that the public's looking at it. I don't want them to think that we're giving it away to all of the nonprofits in the area, we're not, we're getting discounted rates.
That's what it looks like it's confused with, is nonprofits.
So if there's other terminology that could be come up with there, is, um, internal use, I don't know what it would be, but uh, because, but it is an important number, uh, when you're looking at it, is why there is an operating loss out there. It's because we mandate it at no cost to a lot of, uh, a lot of uses.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, that's all the comment I have.
Well, look, I, I kinda share those comments from the standpoint, I mean, I, I used to be, before joining the court, kind of a critic of the youth event center, particularly because it seemed to be a money pit, a, and, you know, it was always operating at a loss. And, and it still is. But I think the difference now is I've seen it in act, action, and I've been part of so many different events out there, I
Look behind the curtain.
Yeah, you look behind the curtain and you realize, I mean, we get a lot of benefit by having that youth event center. So I'm, I'm a big supporter, I wanna see it continue and, you know, in fact, be improved. So while it's a lot of money, three hundred thousand, um, that the county has to fund, you know, i- if we were to try to put a price on how many meetings and county events are, are held out there, and what that would cost us otherwise, that would eat into that number quite a bit, maybe not entirely.
That would be
But, uh, and, and then again, you look at the benefit that our youth, whi- which are perhaps the most important thing that we have in Kerr County.
That's why they're on
The benefit that they have from this event center and, you know, all the classes and events and so forth. You know, i- it's, to me, it's worth investing in our future, which is those kids. And every time they parade in here for all their awards, I think, man, that investment is paying out. I'm so proud of them, and, uh, they, they are the future. So, yes, it's a lot of money, uh, and, and the county incurs a lot of cost, but, uh, I, I, I think, you know, Jake and his team have done a good job managing it, and, uh, we need to continue to maintain these facilities and make them available to our constituents. That's all.
And even on that line, I know that, I don't know how many departments, but numerous departments hold training there
Sure.
That bring in people from the whole region.
Yeah, elections.
We didn't have that facility, send our people to other areas, which is a pretty substantial cost. So it's a good, definitely a good
No vote needed on that one.
So I guess what's the motion?
I think we have a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion to accept.
I'll second.
Have motion to accept the annual report from Oakview Group regarding the Hope Country Youth Event Center. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Well, we, we didn't talk about the qualitative incentive.
We're gonna do one point eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a separate item, okay, I gotcha.
One point eight is considered to discuss appropriate action to award qualitative incentives for year twenty-three, twenty-four to Oakview Group per management agreement, Jake Williamson.
Sure. Uh, now that you've accepted the annual report, uh, part of the county's loss to that is, uh, what I call my report card. Uh, so it gives corporate, uh, a monetary interest, and of course, the, the ongoing at the event center. So are we doing our job or not? Uh, it helps them see that on a, with, uh, some sort of backing, and that's called the qualitative fee. Uh, there are five categories to that, each of those has a monetary value of three thousand dollars attached to it. So every year, we go through the, the grading scale and, uh, award those incentives to the, to corporate, again, that's already in the, the budgeted loss. It's not additional.
Mr. Harris?
Sure, uh, Jake and I met last week and went over this, uh, as we, you know, previous year, you and I met with him and, uh, went over each one, there's five categories, and each one's worth, uh, three thousand dollars. So a total of fifteen thousand dollars we may award to them. Uh, we went through, uh, the first one, customer service, and, uh, him and I together, and I felt like, uh, a twenty-five hundred dollars, was justified, as well as, uh, there's another category of, uh, quality of food and beverage. Well, we don't do food, but, so we're not gonna discount them for that, but we do do beverage now, and, and so, uh, we, I, I think a twenty-five hundred dollar award for that one as well. Repairs and maintenance, he does a good job out there keeping track of what's going on at that building and, uh, maintaining it. Uh, so another twenty-five hundred dollars there. And, uh, creative sales and marketing, he's always reaching out, looking, uh, again, went with twenty-five hundred dollars. And the last one's control operating expenses, a, and this is where I think he, he does an outstanding job. And, uh, I think the full award of three thousand is justified, uh, bringing that total to thirteen thousand out of the fifteen thousand. So I move for approval of that award.
I'll, I'll second your motion.
Motion from Commissioner Harris, second from Commissioner Paces, too. Uh, of the qualitative awards for twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, the amount would be thirteen thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
You've got some timed events at ten, are you watching your time?
We're gonna go ahead and take a ten-minute break right now, we'll come back at ten after.
We almost got through it.
Well, I guess I talked too much, as I wish. Well, I guess I talked too much as I wish to.
One point, consider discuss and take appropriate action for the commission to approve. To allow Kerr County Constable Precinct Three Office to accept the following donated equipment surplus ballistic door panels for two patrol vehicles provided by the Texas Department of Public Safety. A new FLIR thermal monocular provided by the United States Deputy Sheriff's Association. Constable Paul Gonzalez.
Good morning, Court, and good morning, members of the audience. Um, I'm just here, sir, um, Court, to, to request y'alls approval, uh, for the acceptance of the donated equipment. Uh, as listed, a, um, gracious partnership with the Texas Department of Public Safety. They do have, uh, some surplus ballistic door panels that are still serviceable. Um, requesting the, uh, acceptance of those panels for two patrol vehicles, uh, which would be a cost savings of about fifty-two hundred dollars. And, uh, the new FLIR thermal monocular, um, provided also in partnership with the United States Deputy Sheriff's Association with a cost save, cost savings of six hundred dollars. All this equipment is to enhance the safety of the office, but also enhance the safety of the community and providing our service, uh, in the community. So I just request your, your authorization for approval for the office to accept the equipment.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Harris, second from Mr. Pacers to accept the donated, uh, material as written to the record. Any further discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous, thank you, Paul.
Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, out of one point ten, consider discuss and take appropriate action to accept donations to Kerr County Animal Services, totaling twenty dollars for the month of November, bringing givens.
I'll move to approve the seventeen twenty dollars.
Second.
Motion to approve the donation of twenty dollars, uh, for the month of November, second from Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? And those funds do go into that line item, uh, or is this?
We just accept the donations at this point.
Okay.
There will need to be a budget adjustment once they make their initial budget of what their donation should be.
Okay. Any further discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous? One, uh, one eleven, consider to discuss, take appropriate action to enter into a collection contract with Leinbarger, Rogan, Blair and Sampson LLP to collect the link of property taxes pursuant to Texas Tax Code Sections six point three zero, thirty-three point zero seven, thirty-three point zero eight, thirty-three point one one and thirty-three point four eight, and to adopt memorandum approving contract with Leinbarger, Rogan, Blair and Sampson LLP. Uh, I adopt the action approving contract, Bob Reeves.
Good morning, uh, the law firm has been representing my office in the collection of delinquent taxes. I come before the court this morning to respectfully request that the, you approve the contract renewal, uh, which would expire twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-eight. Uh, the contract is in your backup material. There is also a action, uh, required to approve the contract. The last page of your backup, this is simply acknowledging because it is a contingency based contract. I will say this, it's not something coming out of our tax dollars. It's an added fee to the taxes, but it's still considered contingency based. The fee is by statute, the legal fees are by statute. The county attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. I respectfully request approval of the agenda item and authorize Commissioner Letts to sign on behalf of the county.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion, second, motion, uh, by Mr. Harris, second, Mr. Pacers.
Question, Bob, I, how, what's the total outstanding that would go to this collection agency? Do you have an idea?
We have a ninety-nine plus percent collection rate partially because of this firm. To ask how much is outstanding, you'd have to ask me, you know, there's a whole lot that's outstanding when I turn it over to them every July for real property and every April for personal and business, personal property. So there's a lot, but their, their actions is what brings it to this. There is also what's statutory, uh, to help out are over sixty-five that are included in my uncollected taxes of taxed afferrals. They're not turned over to these, but that's included in what's still outstanding. So of all of the entities I collect for, it could vary by entity. E S D three, E S D four has very little outstanding, but they've only been in, in existence a few years. So that's, that's a hard question to answer, Commissioner.
Okay.
I'd be glad to run you every report I have and you can look.
I don't really wanna read through everything.
All right.
I was just looking for a ballpark number, I mean.
I can give you percentages, I said.
Well, they get twenty percent, right?
The attorneys, depending on the entity, it's between fifteen and twenty percent.
Oh, I see.
They collect a lot of money for us, they've done a good job.
Yeah, we wouldn't have.
Yeah. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second to, um, approve the collection contract with Leinbarger, Rogan, Blair, Sampson LLP to collect the link of property taxes, um, and adopt a memorandum approving contract with Leinbarger, Rogan, Blair and Sampson LLP. Action approving contract.
Thank you.
Further discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous?
Thank y'all, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Bob.
Um, out of one point twelve, consider discuss and take appropriate action to name an unnamed road, Jabral, Kuhuri Drive Northwest, precinct four.
Uh, Paul Kohori, uh, applied through the Kerr nine-one-one office on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four to name an unnamed road, Jabral, Kohori Drive Northwest. Uh, the reason on the Kerr nine-one-one application for this request is to name the existing road to provide access to multiple future addresses. Um, Mr. Kohori is, uh, here today to answer any questions that the court may have. Um, and if that answers the questions, um, at this time, I ask the commissioners' court for their approval to name this unnamed road, Jabral, Kohori Drive Northwest in precinct four.
I think, Mr. Kohori?
Yes, sir.
If you can go up to, I think that, while it was passed on last time, it was asked you a question. I think the question was primarily, it didn't really look like a road. It looked like, I mean, it was, you could see some collegiate base, but it was grown up with a lot of grass and there were some gates crossing, um, which is, the gates are fine, but I think there's this, a question as to what the, your plan is for the road. Uh, that was kind of, I think, the main question the judge had.
Okay, well, the, uh, in the future, I might wanna have, uh, some Airbnb rentals out there to kind of help, uh, supplement income, uh, but initially just be my livestock and I out there.
Okay. Um, I think, that's all, I think they had a, uh, nine-one-one just a question. Mainly about, again, it's a, it's more a driveway than a road to look like to us. Um, and that, that it seems like it almost made as much sense at this point to name it off of, of upper reservation. Is that what it comes off of? Lower reservation. Then it could just be a driveway off that, um, but it could also be a road name. So, you know, it's, it's kind of, we're getting into that gray area because of subdivision planning that's, we're getting more and more of this and it's getting confusing as to, uh, whether our road naming policy is accurate or not. I think that's what kind of the question is, is twice as it's come up to the court. Mr. Hacey, do you have a?
Thank you, I, I wanted to say something. Uh, we do have not just subdivision regulations, but the manufactured housing rental community regulations, which includes rentals, um, RVs and such, and that's a little bit different, uh, path than subdivisions. Uh, you don't have to be subdividing the property, it can remain one big piece of property, but if you're gonna have two or more, um, uh, structures that are available for rent, whether it's, uh, RV pads or structures that you build, uh, and you, you know, I would think that would include Airbnb, that's a rental, then you're really supposed to apply, uh, through the manufactured housing rental community regulations for, um, a development plan that comes before the court and that's how that road would get named. It would go through a different process. Uh, if it was to be named today, that driveway is to be named today and that's the intent, that would be circumventing that process. And, and there are requirements for that road, it can't just be a driveway. It's gonna have to meet some minimum standards for public safety purposes.
So I think it would be best for him to meet with you and, and kind of look at the process.
Yes, sir, yes, and it, it was very unclear really what the intent was. So it's, I'm really glad that the court wanted to get the applicant up here so we could better understand really what is the intent of this, but.
And the road would not have to be, to meet our minimum specifications for a county maintained road.
It has to meet our minimum specifications for a manufactured housing rental community road, which is a lesser standard than, than, uh, than a regular county road.
If it makes sense, uh, approval of the day would be kind of putting the cart in front of the horse, in my opinion.
It would.
If that's the intention.
So.
Okay.
Do you know where to meet with them and get with, uh, county engineer?
No, sir.
Well, that's Charlie Hacey, right there.
I'll get you an appointment.
That'd be the next step for you, you can get with him.
Yes, sir.
I think that solves that.
So does anybody wanna make a motion on that item?
I guess we're gonna pass on it.
Sounds like I'm passing. Okay, um, out of one point one three, consider discuss and take appropriate action for the commissioners' court to set a public hearing regarding the name, change Upper Reservation Road Northwest to Reservation Road Northwest, precinct four.
Uh, the Kerr nine-one-one office contacted our office on, uh, December sixth, twenty twenty-four, reporting the road name sign was incorrect on Upper Reservation Road Northwest and that their records showed the road name as Reservation Road Northwest. Uh, this was taken to commissioners' court on January fourteenth, two thousand two to change Reservation Road Northwest to Upper Reservation Road Northwest and the commissioners' court approved this change. Kerr nine-one-one has in their records that the name should be Reservation Road Northwest and, uh, I had spoke with Bob Reeves on this and, uh, I'd sent, included him on the agenda item um, just for the fact of who he is and the tax office with, um, a road name change, the possibility of that. But I forgot that Bob lives, you know, at one time lived out there and still has property and he had told me kind of the same that Mark and Nick had said, that most of these folks don't, their bills don't come to Upper Reservation Road, they come to Reservation Road. Their driver's license have Reservation Road instead of Upper Reservation. Um, so that being said, you know, we need to get, um, we need to make sure what they have is the same as what we have. Um, so at this time, I ask the court to set a public hearing for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at ten AM to change Upper Reservation Road Northwest to Reservation Road Northwest and this is in precinct four.
Y'all are on board with this, nine-one-one, I move for approval of setting the public hearing.
I'll second that.
A motion from Mr. Harris, second from Commissioner Overby to set public hearing on January twenty-seventh at ten AM to change the road name, Upper Reservation Road Northwest to Reservation Road Northwest, precinct four. Any further discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous?
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
All right, Noel. Out of one point one four, consider discuss and take appropriate action to accept the grant award from the Office of the Governors, D J dash Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for the Kerr County Sheriff's Office, Ticket Rider Grant Project in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Morning, Court. Um, we applied for this grant, uh, last December, January, uh, and, uh, it finally, the funding finally got awarded to us here at the end of November. Uh, the project was supposed to start October first, so we're a little bit behind on the, on the project period. Uh, but that was the pass through, through ACOG, uh, and this is for the e-citation or ticket rider grant, uh, that we applied for back then, so.
I'll make a motion, we approve the grant.
Mr. Overby?
I'll second.
To accept the grant, Mr. Pacers, second with that motion to accept the grant.
Scott, can you just elaborate a little bit more about what this project actually would be?
Uh, so it would actually convert, um, currently, uh, our deputies are our law enforcement here. Uh, they write, they write hand citations, uh, so this would be at the processes, this would be electronic system for, for the ticket rider. So, uh, we've currently talked to a couple of vendors right now, we're looking at some things, probably beginning of, uh, January, uh, we'll have, uh, one of the vendors that we already went, uh, down to San Antonio, uh, visited with, they're gonna actually come here and we're gonna get some of the, the, uh, court folks, uh, the court clerks, uh, as well as IT, uh, involved in that so we can kind of look at the overall project for it. Uh, but it's gonna speed up a lot of, a lot of stuff on the court end as well as on the law enforcement side cause right now, you know, deputies, you know, out on a traffic stop, they're handwriting citations. But it also falls into a big issue of, uh, our clerks, so they mainly, right now, they enter those citations, uh, into the RMS, into the Tyler system. Uh, this will be done digitally to do that, so it'll speed up a lot of time, much like, you know, with the DAs talked about their, their case management. It's gonna be the same thing for our, our e-citation management.
Does that mean you're gonna, every deputy will have some kind of handheld? Does that mean you're going to, every deputy will have some kind of handheld device or something?
Yeah, so they'll, yeah, yeah. So they'll have a, a device. We originally, it could be as, on their phone, and scanning in that information through the thing, and then it actually can, a couple of different vendors, either it prints out on a, on a receipt type deal, or it actually, they, they receive an electronic copy, the violator would as well, so. And then the court would be able to view that, same thing, so. Gives the ability with, with that e-citation, they could take pictures of the violator, so on the, on the court end, if somebody gives bad information, they can actually match up the picture with the violator, so. It, it's a, it's a pretty good process, and it's a big step forward, and, you know, you're just speaking to some of the, the court clerks that, you know, you know, in the JP courts, and they're like, man, they're spending all day of entering citations into the, into the RMS system, so this would definitely speed it up.
I'm just thinking, once we go down this path, the actual, the total cost to put all those handheld devices that can print a copy and.
Yeah.
It's probably a lot more than seventy-five thousand, depending on how many deputies you have writing.
Yeah, so this would be the initial cost for the project. We would look at, the e-citation is actually a, a web-based program from it, so there's an annual licensing cost that goes with it, but it's very, very minimal to that, so actually with, with this amount of the project we're looking at, we'd probably get into like a two-year contract where this would actually cover all of that for up to two years, so.
Another thing that would be good for us moving forward, like I said.
It's going to save a lot of time for everybody in the long run. Right now, when you handwrite them and you enter them, it just takes a lot of time. Those days are over.
It's also less chance of error.
Yeah.
Correct. It doesn't mean we're going to write more too, so I want to make it clear.
That's an intuition. Thick fingers.
Quick or yes.
We have motion to second to approve the Office of Governors, D.J.-Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for the Sheriff's Office, received seventy-five thousand for a ticket rider grant project. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item one point one five, consider discussing appropriate action to accept the grant award from the Office of the Governors, BG Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program for the Kerr County Sheriff's Office for year twenty-five, Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Project in the amount of twenty thousand four hundred dollars.
Yeah, we applied for this grant right around the same time last year, so like I said, Governor's Office just awarded us this. This is actually to increase our bullet-resistant body armor that deputies currently have is about to expire this, this year. We don't have much time for it. Some of it kind of spills over to, to the beginning of next year, but this would be, money would be used towards to replace that bullet, rifle-resistant body armor, so. Traditionally, that body armor has about a five-year factory warranty that's on it, and that's from the N.I.J. That's what they do, so. Back when, previous administration, they had applied for the grant, got, got the body armor out. Now we're just at the end of it, and we need to get it back out.
Noel, I see you up there. Do you have anything else to add? You're good?
No, no. I personally just really, really agree with that first one, the ticket rider thing in comparison to what the other plans have and how that system works, and so I had just wanted to make a comment to the sheriff.
Gotcha.
So my, my question, Scott, I mean, what does twenty thousand get us? I mean, that doesn't sound like very much.
We're working with some vendors, you know, we've seen the, you know, from five years ago of what, of what that, of what those plates cost.
Yeah.
To now is unbelievable. So we're going to, we're going to get maximum amount we can with it, so we'll probably end up looking at maybe some, some budgetary stuff to kind of, to replace some of that stuff in the future, but this grant opens up every year. Originally, when we applied, it was much more than twenty thousand four hundred is what we got awarded. It was, it was a higher amount, but that's what the number they came back with, so that's what we'll have to work with, so.
I get that, but I mean, like, what, what does one set of body armor cost?
So it depends on the, the size of the ballistic plate, so, you know, four hundred and fifty dollars a plate. The smaller ones run about three hundred and fifty dollars a plate, so we're just going to kind of talk to some different vendors and go from there, so.
Well, yeah, Chris, I think.
Well, you're talking about two plates per person.
Yeah, you're just talking about the plates. That's not the vest. Correct me if I'm wrong. The vest is around twelve hundred dollars now. The vest and these plates go in, which you're probably knocking on two thousand dollars today.
So what expires out? The plates or the vest?
Both, both of them have expiration on them, so. So, you know, our, yeah, our everyday body armor, our guys wear the soft body armor, so that has a five-year, as well as these plates have a five-year, so. So, you know, when it's five years when they're both done, cycling another one.
I don't believe they have a motion. I'm going to move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion for Commissioner Harris, Second Commissioner Paces, to accept the Office of the Governors, BG Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program for Kerr County Sheriff's Office for year twenty-five, twenty-two, for rifle-resistant body armor project in the amount of twenty thousand four hundred dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item one point one six, consider discussing appropriate action for the court to authorize issuing the request for qualifications for engineering service for hazard mitigation grant program, H.M.G.P., the parenthesis, D.R. four four eight five zero zero one zero administered by Paces.
Morning Commissioners. So, back again, this request for qualifications for engineering services has to do with the Hazard Mitigation Grant for the Volunteer Fire Department generators. In order for us to proceed with the, the installation of those generators, we're going to have to have an engineer do the design for each of those volunteer fire departments, so we have to have an RFQ for an engineering service. The, we've had this discussion with Grant Works and some representatives from T-DAM. Even though we already have an engineer on contract, I don't think that that engineer is going to qualify. I think FEMA has some pretty stringent procurement rules, and so I think for us to proceed with the grant, the RFQ for an engineer's, engineering service is going to be necessary. The cost, the, the cost of that engineering service is already covered in the grant. I move for approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Harris, Second Commissioner Overby, to authorize the request for qualifications for engineering services for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, D.R.-four eight five zero zero one. Any further discussion?
Have you already prepared the RFQ document?
No, the next two agenda items are about that RFQ.
Okay.
Grant Works will be doing the, the RFQ wording for us.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item one point one seven, consider discussing taking appropriate action for the court to authorize advertising the request for qualifications for engineering service for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, D.R.-four four eight five zero zero one zero, Volunteer Fire Department Generators.
Again, so we're just asking for permission to advertise that RFQ.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Paces, Second Commissioner, I have a motion from Mr. Harris, Second Commissioner Paces, to authorize advertising the request for qualifications for engineering services for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, D.R.-four four eight five zero zero one zero, Volunteer Fire Department Generators. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. For zero. Item one point one eight, consider discussing taking appropriate action for the court to establish a selection review committee for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, D.R.-four four eight five zero zero one zero, Request for Qualifications.
Again, so once we get all RFQs in, we'll have to have a selection committee to choose the engineering service, and that's what the agenda items.
You have a recommendation on the makeup of the committee?
Sir?
Do you have a recommendation on who should be part of this committee?
Yeah, we'll probably need who? A.
We'll need, we'll need at least one county commissioner.
Commissioner.
We'll need one commissioner of the court, and then whoever you think should comprise, comprise it at that point. We're just a little bit ahead of the game on this one. We don't have the actual, the great rating sheet. We'll have that as part of the RFQ. We'll have that as part of the RFQ, but Grant Works wanted us to go ahead and get the selection review committee assigned for the paperwork.
You'll come back to us when we form the committee to.
Well, what they want to do is let's go ahead and form the committee now. We will come back to you later to get approval for the rating sheet as to what is going to be graded. Two, two separate things, but.
Well, I recommend Commissioner-elect Jones be on the committee since he left early.
I like that. That makes sense.
Yeah, I was going to volunteer being an engineer, but no, I like your recommendation better.
And who else do we recommend?
How many do you need on that?
Dub.
How many do you need? Three?
We, we need, we need at least, I would say, five.
Five.
I would say five, because this is a T-DAM FEMA type of thing.
So Dub will be on there?
Do you need Charlie?
Charlie Hastings.
You need Charlie Hastings.
Charlie, Dub.
Noel, you want to be on? Can you be on it?
I can.
Top five?
Did we say Paces or Jones? Which one of you?
Jones.
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 Commissioner, Commissioner.
And we can.
God's bad.
You actually could be on it as an engineer.
We'll get, we'll get one representative from Carfa as well, one of Fire Chiefs.
Okay.
There you go.
Carfa representative, okay.
That's a good idea.
Well. We have a motion to those four slots, five slots?
Yes, I move, we approve the, the slots mentioned, which were Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner-elect Jones, but still, we'll leave there by that.
Yeah, and then we, we have Dub, we have Noel, we have Charlie, and.
Carfa representative.
One V A T G.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll do.
Do you have a second to that?
I'll second.
Motion to second to, for the agenda item as announced. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. For zero. Item one point one nine, consider discussing taking appropriate action to approve the reappointment of Carrie Potter to the Board of E.S.D. Number Three for a full two-year term. Carrie was appointed as a replacement for the vacated position previously held by Ed Story, and to approve the appointment of Lindsay Forrester to the Board of E.S.D. Three as a replacement for Kathleen Vincent, who is stepping down from the Board effective January first, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and appoint Carrie Potter for a full two-year term with effect from January first, and that we appoint Lindsay Forrester to the E.S.D. Number Three Board as a replacement for Kathleen Vincent, so again, with effect from January first.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Paces, Second Commissioner Harris, to appoint Carrie Potter and Lindsay Forrester to the Board of E.S.D. Number Three, effective January one, two thousand twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item one point two zero.
I want to make a correction. Lindsay's last name's spelled.
Did I get it wrong?
Yes, it's F-O-R-S-T-E-R, Forrester.
There's no E.
There's no E. Oh, okay. Forrester.
Forrester.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Apparently she used to work for AgriLife.
Yes.
Yeah. County, whatever. Good.
And her husband is a great.
Yes, without doubt.
Anyway, item one point two zero, consider discussing taking appropriate action to adopt the revised Kerr County Employee Handbook.
Good morning. So this has been a project that we've been working on for months, so here we are.
This long.
We've got collaboration from Treasurer's Office, Auditor's Office, Heather, husband, Commissioner Paces, so ready for it to just be.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve, or rather, adopt the revised Kerr County Employee Handbook.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion from Mr. Paces, Second Commissioner Overby, to adopt the revised Kerr County Employee Handbook. Any further discussion?
Is that effective today, or?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if somebody breaks a rule and think.
Are you planning on that?
Only you would ask that question.
I know that would be a question, but.
Sylvia, how soon can you roll it out?
Well, we're going to try to get it out as soon as possible.
I thought it was effective January one, though. No, it's, it's today. I thought it was for, I thought we were doing this for next year.
That's what I would modify.
And that may happen when Heather said on, yes, at our last meeting.
I, I think it's actually.
Yes.
January one.
Okay, so we're effective January one, two thousand twenty-five?
So I'll modify my motion to.
Yeah.
Make the adoption of the revised Kerr County Employee Handbook. With effect from January one of two thousand twenty-five.
Sure.
There you go.
Is your second okay with that?
My second is fine with that.
Sylvia, thank you. You spent a lot of time working on this. We really appreciate it. It took, it's something that's been needed for a long time to get the handbook updated and revised, to make sure we're meeting all the federal and state requirements plus to make it match what we're doing, so.
I'm happy it's done.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item one point two one, consider discussing taking appropriate action to ratify and confirm the audits required by Article fifty-nine point zero six of the Code of Criminal Procedure and the financial, or for a year, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, Chapter fifty-nine, Asset Forfeiture Reports, and for the one-ninety-eighth District Attorney and two-sixteenth District Attorney and the Kerr County Sheriff's Office. That was all. Ms. Shelton?
Yes. The County Auditor's Office has performed audits as required by the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure fifty-nine point oh six for the one-ninety-eighth DA, two-sixteenth DA, and the Kerr County Sheriff. The audit covered receipts and specific expenditures of all proceeds and property in seized and forfeited accounts. I'm requesting that Commissioners' Court ratify and confirm the attached reports.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion from Commissioner Harris, Second Commissioner Paces, to ratify and confirm the audits as presented. Any further discussion?
Just a question. What happens to the, the funds that come out of the asset forfeitures? Are they restricted in their usage? Do they go back to the district courts, or what happens to them, or is it just going to the general fund?
So I may have to get the help, help from the sheriff here, but basically, whenever they seize funds, they're held in a separate account, and for those funds to be moved anywhere else, it has to be by court order. And so whenever we go in an audit, we're auditing that the funds that came out of the seized account, bank account basically, did go to who it needed to go to, be it back to the victim, or lots of times it'll go back to the DA's themselves, to the county sheriff, whoever worked on that arrest.
I can't recall the last time one of those came to us, so.
Well, they don't go to, they don't go into the general fund. They, they're pretty much at the discretion of the DA's and the sheriff.
So if you'll recall, we have three different bank accounts and/or, I believe all three of their forfeiture accounts are on the county system, but it's not part of the general fund, and they actually present their budgets to Commissioners' Court for approval, and that's part of our budget process. So you'll be seeing the reports when they come in, or their budgets. At budget time.
Okay.
Okay. I think we voted on that already.
No, we didn't.
We didn't vote. We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion to second to approve, ratify and confirm the audits prepared as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Going to the approval of general, agenda, budget amendments?
Yes, there are three budget adjustments in front of you, and two of them are just line item transfers. One of them is a correction of a group insurance employee that was hired only needed insurance for themselves, not their family.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion to second to approve the budget amendments. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Next is the item two point two, pay the bills.
Yes, invoices for today's consideration amounted to six hundred seventy-two thousand twenty-six dollars fifty-six cents.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Harris, Second Commissioner Overby, to approve the disbursements presented.
No, he did, he seconded it back.
No, sorry. Seconded by Mr. Paces. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Late bills, two point three.
Yes, we had passed out. Yes, we had passed out forty-five thousand one hundred dollars twenty-five cents on Friday, however, today, when y'all passed Agenda Item one point two, I believe the escrow contract required a seventy-five thousand dollar payment with that escrow, so I would ask that you also include that. And in, that payment of that for approval today, so it'd be one hundred twenty thousand one hundred dollars twenty-five cents.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
A motion from Commissioner Harris, Second Commissioner Overby, to approve late bills in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand one hundred dollars and twenty-five cents. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Auditor reports?
There are not any.
Monthly reports?
All right, for October twenty twenty-four, Treasurer's Report, County Treasurer Tracy Saldan, District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance, November twenty twenty-four, Payroll, County Treasurer Tracy Saldan, Justice of the Peace, Judge J.R. Horn, Precinct Two, Judge Bill Ragsell, Precinct Four, Animal Services Director Reagan Gibbons, County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Nadine Alford, District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance, Continuing Education Transfer from December first, twenty twenty-three, to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Tax Assessor Collector Bob Reeves. I move for approval.
I'll second.
I have motion from Commissioner Harris, Second Commissioner Overby, to approve the monthly reports as read into the record. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Court orders, we have our court orders from our December ninth meeting, four one zero zero seven through four one zero three zero, and court orders four one zero three one through four one zero three three from our December sixteenth meeting, they all seem to be in order, I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
Motion by myself, Second Commissioner Paces, to approve court orders as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Going to the information agenda? Any information from department heads? On to elected officials? Liaison commissioners positions? I'll have a couple on that one.
Okay.
There are a couple of things that are kind of hanging out there that I've been working on, and this is just more information for the next court and this court. There are things, I, I am more than happy to work on a few of these items, to kind of be at no cost to anybody, except me, I guess.
Just time.
And a couple of things. One, is the animal control building? I meant to put on this agenda and forgot. Charlie Hastings would be a good choice to be, not necessarily the project manager, but a construction oversight person. We, most of our projects in the past, we've hired construction managers. I think Charlie can handle parts of it. I don't think he's a full construction manager, because that's gonna get into some other things, but I think the court, I think Charlie would need a court order to act in that capacity, I think it's outside of his job description, but I would recommend the court look at asking Charlie to be involved with that building project, especially with, you know, with the buildings out, pad, roads, he's a certainly qualified engineer, and I see him here, and I've talked to Charlie about that, so he was, knew that was coming. Another item...
Is he willing? Is he willing to do it?
I, I did it for the Hill Country Youth Exhibit Center, you know?
My only concern is I got you busy on...
We're, we're busy.
As long as you can handle it.
There's no doubt, and, and it can be handled, and, and if I need help with something, I'll say something.
Okay.
So...
All right. It's not, not a full construction manager, it's not the, it's just kind of to oversee some of it.
There's some coordination that has to go back through the architect.
Right.
And we gotta be able to speak, architect and engineering speak.
Right.
Well, and I know that Rockbridge will be involved, I think, with the road and the parking lot, and we're used to working with Charlie, so...
But we will have a liaison commissioner as well, so there's also a role for one of the new guys.
Oh, yeah. Another thing is, Commissioner Paces and I have talked a little bit, we've been working for, I think, like, two years, it seems, on...
At least one.
Year and a half, a long time. Salaries and job, not jobs, salaries and the whole benefit package and step and grade system, and we just, we hope to start that after the budget year started, it has never happened, but I'd be glad to continue to work with Commissioner Paces a little bit on that. Little League Field, Heather and I have been working on a new lease out there, it's almost finished, I wanted to run it by Greg Peschel, who's kind of been assigned by Little League to kind of finalize that, and it's, it should be done real quick. There's a resolution that I'll coordinate with Commissioner-elect Holt relating to a development north of Comfort and potential pollution into North Creek due to a package sewer facility going in there, I think he's familiar with that project, and I mentioned to Commissioner Carpenter that we do a resolution to T.C.E.Q., so that needs to be done, and I'd be glad to work with him on that, and then, and if there's any work that needs to be done, working with the city curve hole on the zoning for the sign for the Hill Country Youth Event Center, I'd be glad to coordinate that with zoning, and then as soon as those are done, then I'm done.
You have a hard time leaving.
Hard time leaving. Anyway, those are, any other items? None, we're adjourned, thank you.
Awesome.
Good job.